As well as in offices that we would take a little bit longer, so we're hoping to do that if we can. Everyone's had an opportunity to do that over the last few weeks and months. I have had several people come through. In fact, our very own magistrate, chief magistrate, Joel McCormick was here this morning. So he's first, I'm gonna ask him to come on up and begin. And let's see. That'd be perfect, thank you.
Uh, we can, uh, I'm Joel McCormick, uh, chief. I mean, we can work with everything that we've got on here. We've got to have, uh, for the printing and binding's gone up and the travel and education has gone up. And that's the only thing that I see a difference in. And we can continue to operate on a shoestring as we've done for years.
Okay.
Any questions or?
So tell us, tell us who you are and where you, what you do every day.
I'm Joel McCormick, uh, babysitter of the county.
Yeah.
And, uh, we do civil and criminal stuff. Uh, criminal end of it is the misdemeanor stuff in the Dade County. And the felony charges go to Superior Court.
Okay.
Uh, so the civil end of it is people that are evicted or if they're owed some money.
Right. And your office is located in the court facility over, over here.
Cap Tree Street.
Over the street, all right. Uh, so you've requested an increase in printing and bonding. And what happened is, he typically buys books, what, about every two years?
We buy books, uh, two or three years.
Yeah, so last, the, the current fiscal year, it shows zero, uh, I think. And so the reason that is, he didn't buy the binding. And those are required by law to have, uh, docket books. And so next year, meaning July one through June, July one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirty, two thousand twenty-six, you most likely will need to buy that, that purchase again. So it got reduced because of the zero, it automatically went down to three hundred. So we'll recommend that goes back to seven hundred, that's an increase of four hundred dollars. And then also, under public, uh, I'm sorry, education and training, uh, you, was it seven hundred? But those, you spent fourteen oh four, or at least it was estimated to spend four, uh, one thousand four oh four. So you've requested that fifteen hundred?
Right.
All right. I don't have any problem with that if y'all don't, so, all right.
The, the travel has gone up and the, the binding, I don't know that we'll have to keep that forever, the, on the books.
Yeah.
But we have to keep, uh, stuff for, uh, criminal, civil, and then there's a docket book for, uh, stuff that's going to Superior Court.
Okay.
So I think that we're the only office in Dade County. I was telling you and Melissa about the typewriter that we've bought.
Yeah.
If any of y'all want to see a typewriter, come down, I've still got one.
If anyone wants to see his typewriter, which is a historic, uh, you know, piece of equipment.
Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for everything.
Would you like to come on up? Carolyn Hickson with the elections. And that should be page two, I think, three, three, page three.
I am Carolyn Hickson, member of the Board of Elections since two thousand and six. Our office is located in the room behind us here. Hopefully, in the future, we'll have a new building. And I'm trying to stay alive and work long enough to get to go to that new building where I have a place to put my feet when I sit down beside on top of a cardboard box. Because that's where a good percentage of our files are right now, they're in cardboard boxes under our table where our feet should be. Anyhow, I've got a lot to learn, a lot to look forward to, so that's only, that's on my agenda. The reason I'm here, though, is to ask for funding for us to train our poll workers. As you know, when you go out into the precinct in your own community, there are four or five people there. Those people are ordinary people, your neighbors, are you, as many of you I have accosted. And I ask you to come be a poll worker at one time or another. And if I haven't, now that I see your face, better watch out, because I'll be looking for you. Uh, the only thing for you elected officials can't. So, uh, due to the lack of time, I've given the board, the commission members, some handouts to look at as to why we're needing some money to train these people. Now, I go find ordinary people. I don't look for anybody with college educations or whatever. I look for you, your family members, your neighbors, my friends, anybody that I can crowd lots of times. We can take ages sixteen till they can get around, yes. Uh, the requirements are, you have to be a citizen, you have to be able to read, write, and speak the English language. And on my recommendation, you have to be able to provide your own transportation. Now, we have had people that have taken the county bus and actually gone to a precinct at five o'clock in the morning to work. So these people that come in and spend, well, they get up at four thirty, they have to be at their precinct at six A.M. All their paperwork has to be done, all equipment has to be set up, has to be running, they have to be ready to go at seven A.M. And they work a twelve-hour day. Now, this is people my age, and a lot of them are my health, my condition, a lot of them are your health, your condition. But you hop up in the morning at four thirty and you go work fourteen hours, and then you go home and feel proud of yourself because you've given something to your community, you've done something to give back. But where did you get the training to do all this? Well, it happens here in this room, that's why it stays tied up a lot. It happens at the library when we can talk them into letting us come over there. Sometimes we go in the hall, sometimes we do things like that. But that's not our question today, I want to know how to pay people to bring them in and train them. This is the manager. Each one of these folders has papers that have to be filled out correctly at the end of the election day. The, the person that does that is supposed to be able to work on this throughout the day. Sometimes we have an election like we had Tuesday where there was ample time to do that. Sometimes we have an election like we had last November where there's no time to do that. But it always comes down in the evening when they come in and they bring all these paperwork in, they bring all their equipment in, they bring all their other workers in, and they bring their worn-out bodies in, that they begin to pile all this out. And it has to be accounted for, checked, processed, packed up, and locked away again. We don't have enough training for whenever those managers are filling out this notebook of paper because we can do only two hours because we don't pay them. Well, why don't we pay them? I don't know, it's the way it was whenever I came in here. So we, we, we squeeze in two hours here, or two hours there, or two hours somewhere. They quit what they're doing, they change their plans, they move their doctor appointments, they don't get their perm that day. They come and they take training for two hours, and then we send them out, same for the managers. And so they can call back and we will spend time working with them on it. But they're busy people, too, they have businesses, they've got grandkids, they've got all these things. We need to be able to set up an eight-hour day where we can bring the managers in and pay them. Now, normally, they make ten hours, uh, ten dollars an hour. But right now, we're paying them for a sixteen-hour day because they're there at six in the morning and they, they don't leave for sure until eight at night, and sometimes it's later, and that depending on what's happened during the day. So what we're asking for is enough money to be able to train these managers that, that wear themselves out struggling with this paperwork that they just see every two or three months, every two or three years or whatever. Um, the reason we haven't done it before is because they pay their own gas to come in for the two-hour training. We don't offer many snacks, drinks, lunch, or anything, we just say, "Thank you." And then, at the end of the day, after they do their, uh, fourteen-hour day, we give them a whopping check of a hundred and sixty dollars. So, I mean, I, I'm losing, you can imagine, I'm losing managers. Four quit after Tuesday. So now I'm gonna, I'm out searching again, so watch out, I'll be looking for you. I need four new people to come in, four new people. I've got to get trained before November because we are having an election in November and next year's the midterms. It's a lot of stress and they need the training. So that's my presentation, thank you very much. We're not asking for much, just to be able to pay these people to come in and take a sufficient training course.
So let me just.
Yes, ma'am.
Process it. So they're getting paid ten dollars an hour right now.
Yes.
So you need a day where they could come in and also get paid to learn this extra stuff that would help them out?
Yes.
Basically?
I'm not even asking for ten dollars an hour for training.
Okay, okay.
You know, whatever, we can come up with something just to.
Sure.
Because they, I mean, they pay their own gas, they buy their own lunch. When they go out and work all day in the precinct, they carry their own crockpots with food. Because if you're working at New Home up on the mountain, where are you gonna go to get a sandwich for lunch? Or who's gonna bring you a sandwich for lunch? You're gonna take it yourself. They take their own breakfast, they take their own lunch, they take their own supper. They clean all that stuff back up, they leave the precinct spotless because we hear about it if they don't. They put all that back in their car, they come down here, they turn in all that paperwork, and then they go home. You have no idea how much a poll worker really gives. And I, when Brian Kemp came in this room right here, probably five or six years ago, I told him, "If it weren't for the little old gray-headed ladies in this world, there would be no elections." Now, I'm sorry, I excluded the men on that because we do have some really good fellows, too.
We understand, yeah.
You understand that, but I was trying to make a point to him. But it's the truth, if it weren't for our senior citizens, and they've already worked their entire lives, they've already paid their taxes, and they just, they need some money to, so that we can give them adequate training so they don't quit on me, which makes my life happy, so.
Right.
How many hours to do the training? If they come in, how many hours would it take to do?
We, we hope we can get, do it all in eight hours, Philip. Uh, and, and probably we can, because as a group, you know, and we have everything printed off, we have plenty of facilities to print off stuff. We can give them each a copy and go over it line by line so that whenever they get out there, they will have at least seen it and touched it and know about how to fill that paperwork then.
And how many total workers?
For an election like we had Tuesday, I had about thirty-five, thirty-seven workers. For one, like in November, I had like seventy. So I would train only the managers and the assistants, not everybody does the.
How mu, how many people are you thinking that is?
Well, uh, there's a manager for each precinct, so there's seven, and there are two assistants for each precinct, so there's forty, so twenty-one people.
Right, okay.
Say, say twenty-five or less, uh-huh. But we could, we could set up wherever we can have a training room then.
Sure.
And, uh, we've got, Tracy Street, one of our board members, does a, the job. And Miki Scribner, I'd like to introduce him to you, please, he's one of our board members. He's also one of our managers at, I'm at New Home. And I ask him, because he has the hands on the whole.
Yeah, I've got it, both ends of it, the working and the paperwork. And, uh, and I think it's, uh, if you don't do something, we're not gonna have the workers.
Right.
In the future, because they're quitting so quick. Uh, you, you, if, if this is the right place to say it, but you need to raise the pay of the regular workers. And, uh, because I can count them on, it'd take two heads to count them. Well, people says, "Well, you know, now that they're taking tax out, it ain't worth it."
Right.
You know, less than ten dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then when was that established, ten dollars an hour, what, twenty years ago? Now, you, you show us how much you appreciate us, you hadn't raised the salary in twenty years.
Yeah.
And that's, that's just not right. Uh, people that, that are working on such an important thing. And, and on top of that, uh, we're in the law. We can be dragged into a court if we don't do it exactly right. So we, we have to get it right u- under the, the fear of consequences.
Right.
Now, if you're gonna pile that much responsibility onto us, then we ought to get paid for that responsibility, particularly the managers and assistant managers, because that's who that paperwork falls on. But we've got to get it right. And, you know, it's just, i- i- if we don't get some help, uh, one day, hopefully, we'll get a new building and there won't be nobody to occupy.
Right, right.
So it's really up to you, but it's time to, it's time to look at this very seriously and see if there's some way you can increase the pay of people that are really sacrificing to do this job because they want to serve the community.
Right.
And, uh, and it shouldn't be penalized for it, thank you.
Before y'all sit down, uh, does anybody else have a question?
Yeah, I have one more question. Um, so this training, would you have to do it, uh, often or?
We have to do training before every election, it's a state requirement.
Okay.
State law, we have to train every election.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I just want it to be clear, yeah, okay. So there needs to be some type of a, a bucket there for you to pull from the, yeah, okay.
Okay. Any, y'all got any other questions? Okay. Um, just to clarify, I know that the Board of Elections is set up, is it with four or five board members? Five board members. Those five board members are considered part-time employees of the board. Uh, and fortunate or unfortunate, when that legislation was set up, they were set up at, what, ten dollars an hour pay? And so that's a legislative action that needs to be corrected. So we do need to take that before, as part of local legislation, uh, to, to fix that. That's just, I mean, we, I have no problem paying them more, but legislatively, we can't pay them more than that. So that, that's, that's something that needs to be addressed through a local act. Uh, and then, and then address in the legisla, the future legislation, uh, the cost of living, you know, because it's still gonna go up in the future. Uh, another thing is, uh, we need to look at, you're talking about poll workers versus managers. A manager is a poll worker, right, all right? There's what, seven managers for seven precincts? And then, uh, and typically on early voting, y'all typically, the board members typically run everything. There are a few poll workers here. You, you do need a little relief, people have doctor's appointments and such, so they do have, what, about five or so that rotate in and out?
We allow on trying to poll workers to choose the day if they want to come in and work.
Right. So we do control, the Board of Commissioners do control the amount of pay a poll worker can earn. It's my, it's my understanding under state law. So it has been, basically, it was just a flat fee for years, but it's what, about a hundred and sixty dollars for poll managers? Is that right, or poll workers?
They all make the very same thing, and managers, uh, when you start, their managers make more.
Yeah.
But I felt like if you were a poll worker, you were there fourteen hours, if you didn't handle that responsibility, you would serve as much pay.
Right.
So that's the way I set it up about, uh, seven, I don't know, some time ago.
Right, okay.
So everybody makes the same, we couldn't, we could justify like pay managers more or less.
Yeah, so this budget deals with typically an election in the fall that normally would just be a city election, but there's probably a runoff about to happen on the Democratic primary that just occurred. Uh, so there'll be one election, the second, normal general election will be in November, mostly for city officers, typically city, uh, uh, officials, I should say. And then I heard tale that the school board may have, uh, an esplas on there, I haven't heard that officially, but anyway, if that's the case, that's the case. There's always the possibility of another special election that we just never know about. And so those run anywhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars. This election we had the other day, New Home voted how many people? Four people. And you had four election workers there. So that's an expense, every vote was a very pricey. But you have to have it, because Georgia law says you have to do it. And so, um, but they did know, they didn't at least have fourteen workers there, they had four. And, uh, but it still makes for a long day.
And that's really a minimum because.
That is, that's bare minimum.
Piece of equipment that have to be manned all the time, and you can't just walk off and go to the restroom.
Right. Right, right. So, uh, under currently Rebecca, Rebecca's our CFO, uh, for anyone wondering out in the world, she's sitting right over here. And, uh, we've got on here thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars for part-time employees. Now, that's, that's our board members, right, primarily for, for that, that's, that's their pay. Uh, and then the, uh, Luanne is the regular employee pay. So we only have one full-time, five part-time. And then if you look down the page there, you have election expense, and it's right at forty thousand dollars. Now, we, you know, take the dice and roll them and say, "This is what it is today." We don't know how many elections we're gonna have, we know we'll have at least two, at least two. Uh, we don't anticipate one in the spring, meaning between now and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah.
Well, I say we don't, but actually, there would be a primary next year.
Yeah, I was about to say.
There'll be a primary in the spring, and that's gonna be a big primary, it's the governor's race.
Yeah.
So, um. Got it done.
So it usually happens in March?
Yep. So it, it, you know, it rolls, we, the way we've looked at this in the past was election expense, we went back four years to see about what it cost, um, four years ago, because that's, that's the kind of election you're having, as long as you only have two or three elections in that cycle, all right? So, um, we've estimated it at forty thousand, but be aware, if we raise the pay, poll workers' pay, that number would need to change, it would need to go back up. And/or if we have another election, that's another additional twenty to forty thousand dollars, because that's just what it costs in Dade County to have an election. So, um, all right. Uh, all right, that's all I've got for now.
Legislation decision, you have to do so many elections about every little thing.
Yeah. Right.
And we understand that it's huge, but it's, and it's you that's got to step up this, and that's all we're asking, we're asking you to step up.
Okay.
So while y'all are here, may I ask a question, because this would pertain to budget? How is it set up on our precincts? I know back, you know, forty years ago, we voted one day a, a year, one day election. We got three weeks, we vote now, so could we consolidate our elections to maybe have only three instead of seven?
Precinct, precincts.
We would love it, yeah. It has to happen, it has to happen, state office stuff. We don't determine.
So they will, so we can't go to them and change our precincts to get it consolidated?
I don't know.
We would love it consolidated, New Home with some, some other place, because it's, it furthers out, and so it gets the most neglected. And the building out there is pathetic with a capital P. And, uh, but the workers are troopers, Miki's always had enough people cheering up them.
But most of her, does most of her votes come in early voting?
Yes, a lot, I don't know.
Or is it about half?
The New Home does show up down here and do advance voting.
Yeah, they do advance voting.
Because most everybody comes to Trenton during that three-week period.
Right.
And even if it wasn't so long, like, three weeks or two Saturdays.
I know, that's why, that's why I was asking if we could consolidate them.
We, we vote for it now.
Yeah.
But Davis is one of the largest voting boxes, right?
Davis, North Dade, West Brown, and New Salem, they all four hang pretty close, they carry the majority this month.
Okay.
Davis usually is the biggest one.
All right. All right. Well, we can explore that, I don't know if it's, I don't know if the, depends on who runs for Secretary of State, I guess, maybe we can get their ear now.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it wouldn't be anything soon, yeah.
I'm sure it would grind slowly.
Yeah.
But it's a process, and it's worth, I think it's worth exploring.
But if we don't get started, then we ought to be running behind.
Yeah.
Can we at least tell people we'll be getting that, hopefully, we'll get that in the works, not just, not.
Well, it's definitely been talked about.
Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for all that you do.
You're very, it is hard for you to do a lot of community service.
Roar Beth Cunningham, come on up. It's just random, right? Page forty-six, page forty-six. Hi, Roar Beth, tell us who you are and what you do.
I am Roar Beth Cunningham, and I am the county extension coordinator at the extension office. The four-H office is usually what people call it, though.
Four-H office, all right. So tell us about your budget.
Um, I'm really happy with my budget, I don't really have anything to complain about, so. I sat down with Rebecca and we worked it out, and I'm, I'm very happy with it.
Okay. I know that there's a new employee coming, is, do you anticipate that changing the supplement line item? I'm sorry to put you on the spot because I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it before, but.
I do not think that it will change.
Okay.
Um, anything with you guys.
Okay.
It might change on the UGA side, but it should not change, uh, your budget at all.
Okay. All right. So currently, that, there's a supplement. At the, listed at the bottom, okay, let me back up, at the top, you can see, used to, we had numbers under regular employees, um, and all that. In fact, they're not, they're even listed on there anymore. But the reason they're not is, we made the decision a couple of years ago to start having UGA pay a hundred percent of everything. That way, they carry the workers' compensation, they carry all those other top fringe benefits or certain things. And that way, we just pay, the county pays a supplement directly to Athens, Georgia for UGA, uh, to UGA, uh, and then they end up getting your payroll check through, uh, UGA directly, direct deposit or however they choose.
Correct.
And, uh, so.
The only thing that might change is the TSA contribution.
Yes.
I don't know if that has gone up yet.
Right, okay, so we have not, I haven't received notification, have y'all, have you heard anything, Rebecca? I haven't either. So, um, about TSA, that's teachers' retirement. I know teachers' retirement went up this year, Lydia's here, she'll bring that, brings up to date on that here in a minute. But, um, well, actually, it's on the medical, on the medical side, not retirement, but, um, so if that were to happen, uh, again, that's built into that, that amount, under seventy-three thousand two hundred. So I don't have any questions, y'all, any other questions?
Yeah, the only thing that would change would be the TSA contribution, and.
Okay.
That's an automatic thing.
Let me write that down. Okay, we'll check into that, we appreciate all y'all do for us, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I love seeing all your little trips. I love the pictures.
Stacy Stevens, while we're this close, let's just flip over one, page, page forty-seven. Hello, Stacy Stevens.
Hello.
Tell us who you are and what you do.
I'm Stacy Stevens, I'm over code enforcement. Uh, this is kind of a new avenue. Our code enforcement has been combined with building maintenance in the past. Now, it is totally separate, uh, we're starting, I've had a couple of meetings with contractors and am gonna have several more, because we're starting to, I'm not gonna say enforce, but we're starting to inform the people of the state laws and the county regulations, and we're gonna keep a better track. and the county regulations and we're gonna keep a better track of it. Which Dawn and I have discussed and I've discussed with a couple of other commissioners. One item like, we had ninety-three new homes in twenty-twenty, in the year twenty-twenty-four in Day County. That number ninety-three, once we implement all the restrictions, state and county, will turn into over six hundred and fifty permits. So I understand this budget may look a little high. I don't know what we're gonna do. Dawn and I have discussed this. There's gonna have to be other personnel and that's just that one item for new homes. So reconnection of powers, checking driveway tiles, checking roads, everything will fall under, over me. It's gonna be very difficult to keep up. So I don't, I'm not real sure how we're gonna do this yet.
Well, we're gonna take it slow and one day at a time.
I got plans.
But we've started anyways.
Between, at the current pace, the last couple of years, around two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-seventy-five different, just permits, electrical permits. That number's gonna go astronomical because of footing permits, framing permits, HVAC permits and other things. So, uh, hopefully the number of money I've been spending on the, the vehicle I've been driving will go down. Cause I appreciate y'all approving a new vehicle. Billy, I think, wants to drive it every day after I turn it back in. But, uh. You know, it's just got two-hundred-and-eighty thousand miles on it. Yeah. But any questions?
All right. So we, I know at the top, it's only got twelve thousand for electrical inspections. And that's probably pretty accurate. I mean, it's been twelve the last two or three budget cycles. Um, I'm not sure where we landed this year so far. Do, do you know? But anyway, on the electrical inspections as of today and.
And that is another item, excuse me, but Day County right now, if you do a final on your electrical, it's thirty-five dollars. The city is eighty, is that right? Eighty-five.
Yeah.
So you take ninety-three times fifty dollars, that's that much more increase. If we go to that scale, we've got to decide what we're going to. Walker County, that same permit's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Yeah. Uh, I know we, you don't have anything budgeted for land disturbing activity. But that, that's a definite possibility. I mean.
Yes, with the land disturbance that the state requires.
Yeah.
That we had a contract, dirt contractors meeting the other day and explained to them what the state requires, what our requirements are gonna be. And that will increase some fees.
Yeah. And so that's, it used to be, I don't know if it still is, eighty dollars. Forty goes to the Department of Natural Resources. We have to cut them a check. Forty, uh, is maintained with, by the county. And then there's a fee according to how many acres you disturb. It's not much if it's one to twenty-four, but it's twenty-five to say fifty.
Right.
And seventy, you know, seventy-five to a hundred or something. I don't know. It goes up, but, um, there's nothing new and that's assessed by the state.
Right.
Just for anybody who's wondering.
The state sets the proceedings we have to give.
We don't even set that value. It's just something that's, we're charged with collecting, but yet we don't, we didn't set it. So, uh, but it hasn't changed to my knowledge in a few years. I mean, I guess that's good.
And Dawn and I also discussed, um, we've got to go through and change some of our ordinance. We've got to pick up some state and national regulations. That's gonna require a lot of work on that also. Which I think, what is it Dawn, every five years we have to go through the ordinances anyway?
Yeah. So I didn't, I budget for anything for attorney fees, but we might need to put a little bit there.
Probably gonna have to.
Uh, because he is gonna have to do that.
There's been two or three issues so far and I've had to go to Robin's office or Robin met with me that we had to discuss. And that's gonna increase.
And let me clarify, attorney fees, meaning our county attorney.
County attorney.
Not to fight with somebody, meaning to help us draft the ordinances or clean up our ordinances. Uh, and really we're just editing, amending current ordinances.
Right.
Uh, that already exists. Some old stuff on there that we need to bring up to par.
Well, one ordinance, right off the top of my head, that, uh, was made an ordinance in nineteen-seventy-three, has not been changed since nineteen-seventy-three.
Okay. Y'all have any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Evan Stone. Page forty-eight, next page.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Who are you and what do you do for us?
Evan Stone, Economic Development Director for the city and the county and also the executive director for the Industrial Development Authority.
Gotcha.
Um, got a couple of good things that I'm gonna report. I got Rebecca, uh, with Rebecca Wednesday afternoon, the Industrial Development Authority, we passed the budget that will start July the first. And we're gonna be able to, uh, take some of the fees away from the county having to pay. Talked with Dawn earlier, uh, during our sit-down over this budget and basically, uh, looked at trying to see what we could do to, I think that at that time it was like three-hundred thousand dollars, you know, over the revenue coming in. So what we're going to do from the industrial development side in the budget was passed this past Monday. The North Georgia Joint Development Authority that we're a part of and have been for a great number of years, the Industrial Development Authority is gonna pay one hundred percent of that. That does not reflect off of this. We're gonna start paying that particular, uh, it largely has always been the, uh, the tax incentives for our industrial park, that we get the extra incentives by being a part of the North Georgia Joint Development Authority on a statewide's an extra five-hundred dollars employee. So it's, it's always been that. The IDA has never, until just recently, in recent years, had money to be able to take care of that. So now that we do have the, the funds, we're going to be taking, taking that out of this economic development budget and it'll be coming out of dues and fees. So that'll be a, a decrease. They also approved an extra three thousand dollars for the, uh, for the employee side. Where we had been contributing thirty-five thousand, we'll start contributing thirty-eight thousand, uh, for the, uh, for the economic development.
Okay. There's whistling back there, whistling.
Whistling away.
All right. So we've got, um, we had fifty thousand in there for, is that right? For, um, industrial development authority?
And I believe that's fifteen thousand from the city and thirty-five thousand from, uh, the industrial development authority.
Okay.
So it'll go to thirty-eight thousand from the Industrial Development Authority and fifteen thousand for the city. So that will, the income will rise to fifty-three thousand.
Okay.
After it's done.
You're right.
And then there'll be a deduction of, uh, I think it's right at twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars for the fees. It's per capita is what we pay, uh, to be a part of the, uh, Joint Development Authority. So it's based on population, but it's right at twenty-six thousand dollars that we pay for Day County.
Okay. So it's thirty, uh, thirty-eight now instead of thirty-five, is that what was it?
Yes, thirty-eight.
Okay. And then fifteen thousand of that really is City of Trenton.
Right.
And then, okay. All right. That makes sense. Uh, and so what you're saying is under dues and fees now, we're handing it along for forty-six thousand one hundred, it's now gonna be reduced by twenty-six thousand six hundred.
Right.
I mean, that's rough. It might be six hundred and twelve dollars or something.
I don't know the exact.
Yeah. It's based off per capita for their membership dues or whatever. And they, so the industrial development authorities agreed to pay the county's Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authorities annual fees. It, it comes in quarterly, dues, dues, right? Um, all right. Other things in that, that original forty-six was the, uh, membership dues into the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, which is right at around fourteen thousand, uh, fifteen hundred for Limestone Valley, RC and D. And then third, SEDA, which is the Hamilton County, uh, part of MSO, MPO, I'm sorry, uh, thing. It's three thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. And then, um, of course, just to the, for the post office logs. So, uh, that's the other rent that's in there, dues and fees. So anyway, that's good news. Thank you, Evan. Now, what was it about the library? You mentioned something.
Uh, there, uh, we're setting up, uh, with the, uh, library and, uh, Lisa is working on it with the library. Of course, uh, Lisa and Seth, uh, share the industrial development authority as well as the library. But we're gonna be putting a, basically a workforce development station inside the library at, in the computer lab. And that's going to have every industrial-based, uh, business that we have, uh, that, uh, where, where folks can go into the library, into the computer lab and they'll have it all right at their fingertips and be able to go online and put in applications to all the, the folks down there. Kind of a one-stop shopping type place. If you wanna, you know, if you need a job. By the way, our new, uh, uh, job un, uh, employment rate has dropped to now two-point-seven. And, and Day County, we're tied with Catusa, uh, as being the lowest here in North Georgia. So there, there will be a workforce-based computer lab inside the library for anybody and everybody would be able to go in and fill out the applications online for all of the industrial folks.
Questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Evan.
Thank y'all.
Lydia Susie with Cherokee Regional Library. Page forty-five. Hi Lydia, and tell us who you are and what you do.
Good morning. My name is Lydia Susie and I'm the manager of the Day County Public Library. And I'm here today to request an increase in our funding. And you did mention earlier.
I'm sorry, forty-four.
That due to the increase of our medical, we are now in a deficit. Our medical increased by forty percent this fiscal year, which has put us into a twenty-thousand-dollar deficit for our library. And we do have two employees, myself included, who utilize, um, the health insurance, which is tied in with the teacher's, um, retirement. And due to that increase, we are now facing a larger deficit. When the insurance was started, it was supposed to be small increases over a period of years. And so this forty percent sudden increase came at a surprise for us.
And it was how much again? Your, the, that's on your medical, right?
No, it's, it was forty percent, so.
Forty percent increase, y'all. That's huge. And how many employees benefit over here from medical?
Two, myself and our youth education coordinator Lynn, who puts together our programming that you see at the library.
And that, so that equates to about, right at twenty, was it around twenty-thousand-dollar increase? Twenty thousand dollars. This is not a very big budget for us. So when they came and asked that, I was like, you know, it's the big one. Oh, that's a kinda moment. And that's a bad place to be. They, they have fund balance, but they only have limited fund balance because they've been using the fund balance for the last fifteen years to fund the library. We still are only open, well, they're, they're closed on Mondays, right?
We're closed on Sundays and Mondays. Um, we are considered a part-time library. We are not open full-time. Um, we have limited hours on Fridays and Saturdays. On Friday, we're only open, we're open ten to three. Saturdays, we are open ten to two. Our library is facing an increase in usage. Uh, your citizens, um, our community love our library. For example, last Saturday, we had ninety-six people visit our library in a four-hour time. And due to our budget, I can staff two people to cover the library for those four hours on Saturdays. So for two people to help and service ninety-six people within four hours, um, that's a lot. Yesterday, we are in our summer reading time, so we are seeing an increase due to that. But we had two-hundred people visit our library yesterday and utilize our library. Yesterday, we had four-hundred-and-forty-three items circulate. They were checked out and utilized. So our library is increasing with popularity, um, with our community. And, um, there, there is a need for the library. But we are now facing this deficit, which can affect, um, our library in the future with how many hours we can remain open, um, how many employees we can have. We are currently, um, bare bones. Right now, I'm even down, uh, an employee. So we are all, we wear many, many hats, each and every one of us, and we all jump in and do our share. But the library is growing and the community loves it and we are, we are thrilled and we love being able to meet the needs of our community through the library. I've personally loved it. I've been, I'll be here living in Day County for five years this November. And I'm somebody who's moved around a lot in my life and I will say, out of every community that I have lived in, this is by far my favorite and where I will be settling in my roots.
So they currently have a supplement request for a hundred and twelve thousand, but they actually need, there needs to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand, but. In order to balance. Now, we're just one funding agent and this is what I explained to the committee that came to visit. We're just one agency.
Right.
Of that. City does give you funds and so does the school board. We know that the school board did cut that a few years ago, but they have restored some of that. Maybe not to a hundred percent of the level it was, but, um.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, they have. And so I give them credit and kudos for that. We, I mean, anyway, so I, I would recommend, I'd like to see it go at at least a hundred and fifteen. That's an additional three thousand, so let's just, we can talk about it here. What are you, what y'all thoughts? I mean, I don't know, let me say this before. I don't know what the city and I don't know what the school board's doing.
Right, right.
Let me ask this. They had a, their budget last year was a hundred and thirty-three. We went down a thousand, so was that from?
Yeah, we moved, uh, um, uh, what did we do? Building repairs. We moved that, we reduced building repairs because we didn't use it.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I mean, I've, I mean, I, not anything, you know, I, I just feel that you guys have done just in the last few years, a great job. And I really think it's a great resource, um, for families with, with smaller kids, maybe not super, you know, teens or anything are there as much. But, um, I mean, it's just a wonderful resource and I feel like with the courthouse being what it is now and mingle on the square and, um, you know, the things coming, it's just, uh, part of what we are. And I, I, I know how hard it is to get workers there and working and what it is to take care of ninety people in a few hours. It's a lot. Um, so, I mean, I, I have always been willing to help out and do what we can. So we just, we just gotta figure out what we're able to do.
Is that supplement split up? How's that split up?
It's not really equal. It's just random.
Yeah.
Who's playing the, who's playing the biggest part?
I think we are.
We are. I mean, I, I wish.
I'm guessing, but I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we are.
I wish.
Do you know?
Somebody else would step up.
You are your biggest contributor.
Yeah, we have always been.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you know how much?
Four.
That we're contributing?
It's here. It's quite a bit. I wanna see, is it one-thirty-two?
Well, that's the toll.
Whole sub-toll.
Okay. I apologize, I don't have that number.
We're giving one-oh-two?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, a hundred and ten.
Two, ten, two, what? Yeah. Yeah.
How much is the city paying?
Do you know how much the city pays?
You just know what we, you just got them numbers over here. Okay.
And, uh.
They pay sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah, and the school board just now, this past year, correct?
Yeah, I believe it was.
It was just last year that they started back, right?
Uh, two years ago, I believe.
And so.
Two years ago?
And they're at twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
And so I. And so, their dilemma that went up twenty thousand is based off teachers', uh, I don't know what you call it. Is it T? It's whatever the medical, the, the, the insurance is through. Uh, so imagine two employees go up twenty thousand, what happened to it with the school system?
Right.
Right.
It's up probably close to three million dollar increase. And that, so they got, I'm sure, their own issues to.
So, and so who is it here? So who is the medical through?
It's state.
State medical? Okay. Because there's not anything you could do about that either. Yeah.
No, there's not.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, what's-
And I under, I understand the school. I mean, I, I've talked about this quite a bit and been to some meetings, so I understand. And I have talked with the school board and it's hard, it's hard for them because they, you know, they're trying to have their library match, you know, and their supplies there. So it's kind of a double thing that they're having to pay for. Of course, if they, you know, didn't, you know, in the past, we didn't have what we have now. So the library was much needed and they gave more money. So I understand where they're coming from with all that. But it's, we're still at this point where you need it, so.
What's the total amount of funding from all three sources?
From all three sources?
Yeah.
Um, two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and eleven.
Two oh five what?
Three eleven.
Okay. And you s, okay.
What was the CD?
Sixty-five?
Sixty.
Sixty?
All right. Um, is that sixty current or proposed?
Current.
Okay. Okay, December thirty-first, all right. Uh, and then the school board, I guess, is what?
Forty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, forty-three. Okay.
And then the rest of your funding comes from the library?
Yes.
Circuit, right?
Yes. So we do receive some from the state that is spent on purchasing new items for the library books and such. And then we do make a little bit off of fines, late fines and fees-
Sure.
And such. And then the printer room, or the printer.
It can't be that much, though.
It's not. We eat a lot of it. We try to keep the cost down and affordable for our patrons. So we don't charge for the paper. We charge for the ink. And I don't make anything really.
Yeah, yeah.
Already at fifty percent. So we're right at fifty percent of the funding. Okay. Any other questions? Unknown right now, right? So we, we will get back with you here within a few days, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Does anybody in the room have an appointment they need to get to that, they need to? Paula, come on up.
What was it?
Good morning. I'm Paula Duval. I'm the chief assessor with the assessors office. Our office is located in this building, suite two twenty-four. We are responsible for setting fair market values for tax purposes in the county. We also provide homestead exemptions, agricultural exemptions. Many different facets we do as far as properties are concerned and property values and exemptions. The Board of Assessors did pretty much accept the proposed budget as we were given. Our overall budget is down a little bit from last year and that's because we had a contract last year that we do not need to have this year. But there were a couple of line items we did request an increase in, most of those regarding training. We are required by the state staff and Board of Assessors to have forty hours training every two years. That training is provided by the Department of Revenue. And unfortunately, the Department of Revenue has kind of decreased the amount of classes they're providing. So we're having some issues getting people in classes, especially our board members. We do have one board member who's out of compliance now because we can't get them into a class. So we did ask an increase in the travel, the dues and fees, and the education and training. Also in board member pay, because when a board member goes to class, they are paid fifty dollars daily for going to that class. So we did ask an increase in that line item. And pretty much everything else, we accepted. I think contracted services, we might have asked a little bit more because we've added mobile assessor, which will add a little bit in our yearly budget. But other than that, I think everything stays as, as it was proposed.
So when you say training, it's, it's not just a day. It's usually a whole week.
Forty hours, so.
Forty hour week.
And one day for travel.
And they don't look that early.
Not that one.
So, and you've got how many employees plus board members that?
As far as employees that have to be in class, we have four of us.
Yeah.
And then, of course, five board members. And we do now have a new board member, so they have to be in class within a hundred and eighty days. And then they'll have to have another class within the year.
And how many board members, all, I mean?
All together, we have five.
You have five, but you got, how many critically need it?
One that's out of compliance, so we need to get him, and then our new board member.
But the rest of them do have to, supposed to try to do that annual?
Yeah, there, there's a date, you know, when you're two years, you know, we keep up with that date. So we have two that have to have classes by November.
Okay.
And then the new one that needs it immediately, and then the new one, so.
My budget went down about twenty-seven thousand, didn't it?
That's correct. Overall, yes.
Uh, that contract, which expired last year.
That contract, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a major worry.
So four employees, one board member, but the others do still have to do that training. Is there any online, I mean, y'all?
The only online, there is classes offered online, but they only are like for eight hours.
I got you.
So there, there's no way you could complete enough, ten, forty hours. And, you know, this, it covers hotel rooms are going up. You can't get a hotel room for a hundred dollars like you used to. Gas is up, you know, but class fees pretty much have stayed the same. But, you know, everything's just going up. Our, our mapping system, Azure, has gone up. So that's why a little bit more in contracted services, Winggap, which is our canvas system. You know, all those things go up too, because, you know, they have their own costs and things like that, so.
Yep.
You know, we have to accommodate that. We will continue with those services, so.
The only other thing that really went up was your group insurance. I mean, everybody's went up. We'll talk about that at the end, but. Any questions?
I understand.
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody want to volunteer? Billy?
Sorry, Billy.
Billy?
Yep.
Billy Mathagill, have the public works-
Page thirty-six.
Which consist of our transfer station, recycling center, our vehicle maintenance shop, and our road department. If you'd like, we'll start with the shop. That's one of the smallest budgets.
Land that. Let's get on the right page here on that. You want to start with the shop?
Yes, sir.
Go to page thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Kelly Barnes, shop.
Okay.
It's, uh, basically, all of our budget is what it is. We don't ask for nothing. It don't take to run it. Little bit of money for the employees to good, but as far as needing anything major, two. Anything can break at any time, but I know we don't see no unexpected expense. It's kind of a cut and dry on what it is and the revenue. We get a little bit with, uh, we do some work for the city, which helps the city on their price. Help bring us a little bit of revenue in, but. You said it's kind of cut and dry.
So talk to us about that, that, you, uh, service their cars, basically.
Yes, for the-
Their vehicles.
Same city had like the police cars or, or trucks or whatnot. Uh, they get a real reduced rate, could save them quite a bit of money. And it brings us in a little bit.
Yeah.
I think we first started this, if some people were to buy extra tools or whatever we needed, but. But it is what it is. It's working pretty good for everybody.
Right, okay.
There are times that, uh, with our families that take priority in the shop and the law, that will get the city, there've been very few times that we could not just get right on their stuff, but. Any question on the shop or?
We went up thirteen thousand on that. Is that insurance and?
Employees.
Employees.
Proposed increase. And insurance, mostly medical insurance. Transfer station. Uh, any other questions? Bill or, okay.
Anything on the shop or the bar?
Uh, recycling or- Or sanitation, whatever.
Or, uh, transfer station, recycling center. It, uh, more people throw away, more we got to charge. I mean, we've kind of become a throwaway nation here in America. More we throw away, more tax paid money you got to pay to get rid of. It's like burying money, but you never get to get it back up and use it. And it's not a Dade County problem. It's an American problem on your garbage. When it be Dade, somebody don't figure out what to do with it. There'll be a tree in there overnight when they do. Until then, we don't keep a burying it. And, uh, like here, we got no, I don't see nothing that we ask them out of ordinary. Don't need no equipment. Everything is good. What we've got on the program, we trade in our equipment, try to every year. Costs a little bit now, but it saves a lot down the road. We've felt, we've talked to him quite a bit. He knows what he's keeping up the equipment out in the field on. If anybody got any questions on that.
How was we able to propose to go down a hundred thousand?
A lot of that is from landfill fees. Um, it just went down. I mean, ebb and flow on that. It's a little-
Every year, we try to predict what garbage is going to be. This year, say, ten pound. Next year, we know it's going to be eleven. Next year, we know it's going to be twelve.
Right, right.
But here, uh, oh, one or two years ago, I mean, it jumped large.
Yep.
And it's kind of trended back.
So our, our scale speeds is what helped bring that down.
Right.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes.
A lot of that, the majority of that is contractor. When it got to high that one time, we had a lot of C and D coming in. People tearing down houses. And, uh, I don't know, it slowed up. There's no rhyme or reason on garbage. What Dade is going to be heavy when it's not. You'll have, today, we might not run but thirty tons. Next year, I will, I'll run ninety tons. I mean, I figured out twenty years, no rhyme or reason.
Right. We noticed between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-three, it went up, and it went up a lot. But we think it was COVID because people started cleaning, they got bored and got in their garage and started cleaning, I guess.
There's no doubt about that. I mean, every, everybody come in with truckloads.
Truckloads.
Well, everybody was home, so.
But now it's all cleaned up and now they're back out, whatever they're doing. So it has gone down for the last year or two, but I don't want to get too comfortable. I mean.
They get to come in, we got to pay to get rid of it.
From five fifteen to four fifty, four, yeah.
Most, I say most, ninety-nine percent of all my budgets-
Is landfill.
Is what it is.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't spend it because we got it. Some years, we come in, on you will wear it quite a bit under. Some year, we go over. It's what it takes to do the job and all, and I'm all spent.
Yep.
Saying that, I mean, you have a tornado come through, we can't keep up now. Everybody.
Okay, all right.
Any question on the transfer station?
I know it very well.
Thank you.
See if you do.
Next, road department. Back one page.
Road, everything's ain't been going along good. A little behind this year on account of the weather. I know everybody knows it's rained a lot. Every time you get your ditch is cleaned up, everything's shaped up. Coming rain, they stop back up again. Hopefully, uh, it dry out and we get going. We got a lot, quite a bit of paving to do. But we can't pave it since the weather. You see up our own, uh, what money that brought in in revenue, all of them are kind of standard grants.
Yeah.
I mean, it ain't like we make no money keeping roads up. On the expense side, uh, you don't see nothing crazy that's all in the land. Only thing I would ask, if I could see, get more money to pave the road, or maybe a tees flo. Something people need to think about.
Yep, you're right.
It would really help get a lot of roads paved.
What does our asphalt prices compare to last year?
Uh, up two dollar a ton, it's all.
Ain't bad, okay.
Now, let me take it back. Last year at the end, it went up two, and as of this year, it's not went up. So it's going to be the same on asphalt.
Yeah, okay.
Don't run a little over, that's doing the work, a little over a hundred thousand dollars per mile of pavement. They was on the width road, on the real wide areas there.
And there's a lot of asphalt being produced because I-59 got paved, I-24 is getting paved. Then you got all that I-75 and all that stuff being paved. I don't know where they get theirs, but. Lot of asphalt being made.
As of now, uh, asphalt's still available. They don't have no big project that we can't get in. I got a tag wall to go. We've had that distributor come. Everything on schedule, everything perfect, with one exception. The trailer was supposed to have been delivered the first of this week to set on the mount. We supposed to have the money. Trailer people not delivering.
Ah, yeah.
They pushed it back a few more weeks, but.
Well, I get it.
Any question on the road or anybody?
No, the only thing that really went up was, again, employees. I mean, that's just regular salary and, and wage. And then the, uh, there's not really new people. We have two new hires, but they've got two out.
Right.
And, uh, we hope they'll come back, but we don't know if they'll come back, but they're not being paid at this point, so. And then, uh, the group insurance, again, that was the biggie. I mean, overtime did go up some, but that's because the average, we had two or three snow events, whereas the year before, we didn't, and so you had a little bit of overtime. It's not much, though. It's only, what, nineteen thousand for the entire year? Or, I'm sorry, eighteen, yeah.
Me, some overtime in the past two months, we seen an exceptional amount of trees falling.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Wind has not been that bad. What it says, it's the wet ground, saturated.
Yeah.
The foliage on the trees is extra heavy. I mean, just like when we had our little dino, we had sent four people out there and that's how we had trees on the road. I mean, it, it falling left and right. Everybody got any questions?
Any other questions? No, sir? We appreciate your hard work and your guys' hard work. And it's about to get hot, hot, hot outside.
Without them, we none of us would be none.
I know, and it's about to get real hot.
We got worked about it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We have Jad Johnson, page fifteen. Tell us who you are and what you do.
Good morning. Uh, I'm Jad Johnson. I'm the Circuit Public Defender. For the Lookout Mountain-
For the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit, which includes Dade County, in addition to Walker County, Catoosa County, and Chautauqua County. Uh, first, I want to extend a party thanks to Chairman Townsend and former Chairman Rumley and the rest of the board on our new space at The Depot. It is fantastic, we absolutely love it there. So, so, so much better than, uh, where we were at, and it, it, it keeps getting, every time I come by, there's something new, the stone, the flagpole, it's just something. They're painting out there this morning, uh, so I appreciate all the continued, um, uh, resources being put into that space, so thank you very much for that.
I think about that all the time.
It's a little bit of a walk, but that's okay.
Well, you know, it's, you can't, it's not really walkable to the jail like we used to be able to do, but, you know, uh, I'll definitely trade it off in a heartbeat, every time.
Right.
So, um, as far as our upcoming budget goes, um. You all have, uh, in the proposed budget, have covered what we've asked for, uh, we did ask for, uh, a little bit more money and, and for, for personnel, and just to. Sort of let everybody know, who may not already know, um, Dade County, uh. There's a prorated share, uh, between Walker, Catoosa, Chautauqua, and Dade Counties, uh, as well as the state of Georgia also provides, uh, funding. Uh, for certain things. And Dade County share is, uh, about nine percent, uh, if I recall correctly, of the, uh, four, uh, other counties. So, it's, it's difficult to kinda tweak, uh, that our Dade County, uh, numbers without also disrupting other counties on down the road. Uh, but we have asked for an increase in personnel costs, we are still, uh, four attorneys short, we should have eleven fully staffed, and we have, we are four short. Uh, we're getting to be where it's critical, uh, if we lose another person, I, I'm not sure how we'll be able to function, quite frankly. Um, and the only way you can really. Help to mitigate that problem is more money, and try to entice, uh, law students who are just graduating, uh, to come to rural Northwest Georgia. Uh, to start their career, um, and the only way to do that is to try to compete with. You know, other places, so, uh, we have asked for more money, although we've, we've, I've certainly tried to be very respectful of my counties in their, uh, their budget process, so. It's, it's a modest increase, uh, and you all have, have, uh, uh, come forward with that, so very much appreciated of that. Any questions about any of the issues?
So in twenty-four's budget, uh, y'all were at a hundred fifteen, but you then dropped twenty-two thousand, so you're only going back up, for us. Thirty-four hundred dollars on that line, um, to ninety-seven thousand two hundred.
Yeah, and that ninety-seven thousand, that's kind of the. That is mostly personnel.
Right, it is.
And, and, and again, you can't say, well, that ninety-seven thousand goes to pay for this person or that person, it's just sort of lumped in.
Yeah.
With the other.
But it's circuit expense, so overall, it's, if you pay witnesses, if you pay whatever, all the counties. We just pay a prorated amount, which is the least, what, right, nine point something or ten percent, basically. Uh, Walker, Catoosa, should, well, Walker, Catoosa get, get the biggest hit, so it's hard for them to pony up the money, but, anyway. Any questions?
So how much, what is the budget for us for him?
Uh, ours is going up thirty-eight hundred overall, but just that one line on them is, uh, ninety-seven thousand two hundred. His, uh, it's one oh two four hundred, is what we're recommending. And that's because we pay, we have to pay for the power bill, natural gas bill, uh, water, and, uh, a few, very few general supplies, we do maintain it and clean it. But the actual money that we pay to Catoosa County, which is part of the circuit expense, our portion, at ten percent amount, is ninety-seven thousand two hundred. And that's billable, he, and I'll be honest with you, you've never, you nor your predecessor have ever billed at a hundred percent. So, but that's what's budgeted, and, and hopefully, because they, they have vacancies they need to fill, but it's getting harder and harder. To fill those vacancies based on the pay that the state allot's for those, same things, exact same thing happening with the district attorney's office.
Yes.
They've had a few, been a little more fortunate to get people, but, um. It's hard to get an attorney to come work for.
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly can't pay what, uh, you know, insurance defense firm in Atlanta can pay, we, we can't even begin to come close to that. Um, and, uh, there just seems to be a lack of, uh, people in their mid twenties who want to come to rural Georgia to work for. A fraction of what they can get in Atlanta, I, I, I can't put my finger on it, but that seems to be the case.
But we do at least allow you to have air conditioning and heat now.
Yes.
Uh, something that they haven't had in twenty years, pretty much.
Yeah, that's, yes, we, we're.
It literally hit a hundred and three degrees in the building down here one day last year.
Not surprising.
I, I witnessed it, she called me and said, please come by, and I said, I will. It's cooler outside than it was inside, so.
So, we, we love our mistakes.
Any questions?
No.
Alright, thank you Jad, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tommy Bradford. I can tell you're bored. And, uh, let's see, what is Tommy's?
I would have signed.
What page? Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, sixteen, correct.
Yep. Page sixteen, yep. You.
Uh, Tommy Bradford with Sheriff's Office, the chief deputy. Uh, basically, I just sit down with Rebecca, and she does a three-year. Expense thing and comes up with an average, and that's basically what we've done here. So there'll be some increases in some things, decreases in other things, uh, pay, stuff like that, I won't get into. As far as. I looked at some of the revenues, a vehicle fuel reimbursement, that's for the interstate stuff, we should have some of that coming in. Like, there's some more work that's scheduled to be done, so, there should be some more of that coming in.
So when you say that, that's the money spent to use the vehicle.
Yes.
But they pay the individual employee directly.
Yes, they pay the individual.
They, meaning the contractor, paving the road, or whatever they're doing.
The contractors, and they recharge ten dollars an hour for the use of the vehicle.
That's right, yeah, okay.
So, usually, like last year, I think, well. I can't remember, I think maybe around sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars that was brought back in for that.
Right.
Uh, but other than that, we're not really asking for anything except for what we sat down and discussed, um. We got hit kinda hard on vehicles, I think we had four engines go down this year, which is very unusual.
Yeah.
So that, that hurt us on vehicle maintenance this year. Um, vests, we had to buy probably seven or eight vests that expired, that kinda hit kinda hard, I did get a grant to pay half of the ballistic panel, not the carrier, but just. They'll pay for half the ballistic panel, panels, so, um, I got some of that money back, uh, but that grant's out of money right now, so I had to wait to reapply. I think I can reapply again next year. Or maybe in July, after. Or, no, after January, I think so, and I'm able to reapply for that one, because it lasts for two years.
Okay.
Uh, I've got the community watch here, I've got one for South Dade. Uh, really don't need it, I don't think South Dade has a, well, I know they don't have a neighborhood watch.
Okay.
Uh, West Brow, uh, used to have a neighborhood watch, uh, they don't anymore, that's being ran, so I don't know that we really need that. New Salem still has their neighborhood watch. Sand Mountain does not have a neighborhood watch. I do know North Dade has approached me about a neighborhood watch, so if y'all wanted to leave maybe one of those to see if maybe they came in, then, you know. That might be something that y'all would, might wanna think about, in case that happens, but, uh. It, it's not a lot of money anyways, they usually, like New Salem, they do their own fundraisers and stuff to keep up with theirs. We donate an old vehicle, they restrop it, so the only expenditures they have is really just vehicle maintenance and gas, which, like I said, most of them, they do that through fundraisers and stuff in New Salem. Another thing, I'll hit on the jail right quick, I did some restructuring, uh, so. I didn't go over the employees that's allotted for that, I just increased one of them, they made a, uh, moved chambers over more. Community involvement stuff with the inmates and like hands up, uh. Like, a lot of the church stuff that goes on, he does a lot outside of that, so I was needing someone to be inside the jail that was able to. Take hands and just deal with the employees and the inmates, and I was able to do that without increasing an employee, but the pay. Went up just a little bit in order for me to get that going, so, maybe a little bit of increase other than whatever y'all decide on. The percentage stuff, or if you do a raise, so, there will be just a slight increase on that.
So, alright, we need to talk about this one, um, this is twenty percent of the budget. I mean, so, this is like, this one office, and we call it department in the budget, but it's a physical constitutional office of Georgia. Called the Sheriff's Office, and this is not even the jail, it's twenty percent of the entire budget. Talk to us about your regular employees, because it is up, but I think most of that is just a cola being proposed. Is there any additional employees, is there up or down employees in that number, is it the same level?
No, we're the same level, I, last year we increased two, but we, that, that's been it.
So you did increase two last year?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, but, but it was budgeted, wasn't it?
Yes, we budgeted it flat, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Now. The employee that's leaving your department or office to go to the jail, are you gonna replace that person?
It's already been replaced, so I had two in the academy.
Okay.
So. So, there's two new ones that's being trained right now, uh. And then, I rolled one from my side back to the jail to start running the jail, and then he'll still have a more spot to fit one on his side.
Alright, you had part ti, you have part-time.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Budgeted, but what, who is that?
So the only part-time, I had two that would work, but, uh, the only part-time I really have now is Trey Williams that works for the city, and. Uh, I got with Rebecca on this, and the other one was Seth, or Charlie Flat. Uh, he's not ever able to work any when we call him, so we just not able to keep him on, uh, so. We talked about decreasing that by, I think it's eleven thousand six hundred. Yeah, he's still in there as of right now, but just.
So it's a little bit.
So that's a little bit, um.
So what is Trey, I mean, when you have part-time, is it like to fill in when there's a sickness or something?
Yeah, like if we have, like, say, a few going to training off of one shift, and then somebody calls in sick.
Okay. Yep.
And we don't, or we start running low, we just like to have a backup person that we can call and, uh, help fill in that void, so we don't get too shorthanded.
Right, and I wanna thank you for overtime, because that number in a lot of counties is astronomical.
Yeah.
I'm talking about in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, so ours is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, that's not bad, considering storms and craziness that can go on.
Keep that down, having part-time, that kinda.
But there is a benefit to overtime, it's.
It is.
Kind of the Philip Street model, where you don't, you pay somebody a little extra who wants a little extra, then you don't have to pay the other person the money. For fringe benefits, medical, dental, all that, because there, you got one person, not two, so, it makes sense at times to do it, but, uh, alright.
So, well, right now they're getting so much off of this extra stuff that they're about sick of working, but we have to keep it full.
Oh yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean.
Group insurance is, is up a lot, but you've got the most employees than any other area of government, so, um, okay.
Also, um, the regular employees, I was able to.
It's up thirty-five thousand.
Uh, Barry Irwin left, and his pay was not where it should have been marked back down to, so when he left, uh, I was able to cut that fifteen thousand, I think, eight hundred. And that's not reflected in any of this, this is something that me and hers just talked about.
So, can I kinda halfway jump the fence?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, your part-time helping that, what you just said, is there any, and deputy wise? Because we're talking about hiring a new officer for animal control, do you have any wiggle room in that, where you don't have, taking, have to. Hire another person for animal control that you can use that money to fill in for, to kill this other amount of money that we're having to come up with?
I mean, I don't have to have the part-time, I'd like, I can make it up with overtime if I need to, I mean, that's, I, I leave that up to y'all, I just try to cut. Back with overtime with that, but I mean, that's not a have to now, especially since I did get the two new employees last year.
So you got two new employees last year, now if we do this animal control person, that'll be a third one.
Yeah, so that'd be that.
So, do you have any wiggle room where you could fill that spot, or somebody could do that spot, without us having to add another deputy? Because we're talking about an almost another hundred grand there.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, but, so just add it, supplement, supple, supplementing the amount for animal control.
Yeah, if you put Barry's profit out of your overtime.
Down, so the fifteen.
Part-time people down.
So if I do away with. Let's see. Not sure I'm reading this right, is it supposed to be twenty-three thousand five hundred for?
Proposed.
Proposed, that's for the two, so if I did away with that, and then the fifteen thousand eight hundred on berries, that would be.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand, I mean, that cuts into some of it.
Yeah. It helps.
What do you mean cuts into some of it?
Talking about the.
Animal control.
Animal control officer.
Well, oh, well, I was.
Funding it.
Well, I was think, I was, I thought you meant, like, could one of your guys or girls?
That I have right now?
That you have right now?
I mean, because they work, the way they work, you'd have to train two people.
Okay, yeah, I know, I mean, we talked about that, but.
I mean, as far as vehicle wise, like, you know, you could switch in and out, whoever's on patrol.
But you could take that fifteen. And put on top of, top of somebody's.
Or, yeah, the twenty-eight thousand, or actually it'd be about twenty-four thousand.
So it would be like a benefit to be this person?
I'm sorry, I'm. Fifteen thousand and twenty-three would be about.
Yeah.
I don't think that would work out.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, I, it wouldn't work out.
Because you, the amount of officers you have now, though, their shifts, the way they work out, you've gotta have what you gotta have to make that work.
Right, right.
But, but if we take them, if we take that money, that's, which is thirty-eight thousand, that puts us coming back in fifty thousand, fifty thousand for animal control.
Correct.
Because.
And, uh, vehicle maintenance.
But you're saying, so you're saying that employee would be?
It would, it'd be an animal control budget.
It'd be an animal comparative budget, but still to be in.
It's just transferring that.
Which would be what amount?
Thirty-eight thousand-ish.
Yeah, or was it, uh, twenty-five thousand?
So right now we got eighty-two thousand budgeted for animal control.
Right.
Minus thirty-five thousand off of that, and then we would only have to pay forty-something thousand.
Right. And that's only, we'll talk.
The vehicle maintenance, with me and her discuss this, because I mean, it's unusual for us to have four engines go down, I mean, that's just not normal.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, so we, I talked about lowering that down for about twelve thousand five hundred, because I, I just feel like. We just got hit hard, and so some of this, that she's taken the three-year figure on, is including this past year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it went way up because of the four engines, ninety-six, or whatever it came out to be, but.
So you're, where is proposed at seventy-seven thousand?
Reduce it another twelve-five.
Reduce it twelve-five, so we could take some of that money and throw to that as well.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
And contracted services, which I get, that everything's just higher, any work.
Yeah, so, um, I guess, I don't know, it's not time to talk about it, I guess, right now, but, yeah, we, we shouldn't, I mean, he's. Deducting it, but we shouldn't take it from that bud. deducting it, but we shouldn't take it from that budget, because he's gonna have to have two.
We're gonna, it's in the animal control budget.
Yeah, we're.
We're just ain't got there yet.
Okay.
We'll bring it up here next while you're standing here.
I don't wanna know anything about that.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
That's a good question.
I, I don't know. Like I said, we had three this year where he helped us out a lot that had babies.
I'd at least take it to forty.
So of course, you know, I'm from the old days where, you know, the men took off like maybe a few days, but now these new, these new men wanna take off as long as the wife takes off, so we got hit hard by that happening, so uh, he helped out a lot to keep that overtime down because of that, but I, I think everybody's had their babies now, so hopefully we're in good shape.
I think that's a state thing now too, though.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
But just because they're alpha, don't mean you have to.
So.
Right.
I mean, that's the difference.
It's not much, but about, raise it twenty two hundred, the overtime, I'm sorry, from thirty seven, eight to twenty two to forty.
What's that?
I mean, it's not, who knows what it'll end up being. It depends on how many storms and snowstorms we have, I mean.
Well, a lot of that depends on what happens.
Uh, you're right, it's hard to say.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to say, but we try to stay within.
I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Like I said, also the neighborhood watch stuff, y'all.
So on that, while we're on that, on the neighborhood watch, I mean, we got what, nine, is it on yours, or just what we have in neighborhood watch?
No, it's next page is, it's page is seventeen through twenty.
Yeah.
And they're not much, but we can cut them out.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a lot.
Okay, so we could cut.
Okay, uh, let's. That's right.
Right, there's no, that's what I try to explain to people.
It was just a placeholder in the budget. But it was only three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, really hard. So.
Yeah.
Well, that's just, okay.
Page twenty is Sam Malslow. Let's just make it zero.
Yeah, I'm gonna say if we wanna keep it lower to like a hundred dollars or something, just to give her her place.
Well, zero still holds it, yeah.
Still holds it? Oh, well.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, uh, nineteen is the same as it's proposed.
Now, New Salem may use some of theirs.
That's two thousand, it's not much.
Like I said, Dave.
Page eighteen is West Boral, it's zero. South date zero. Right. Okay, yeah, a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. One hundred. And that's what it's for. It's not, you know, okay. And really, why would, I mean, North Date, if they want one, if they got people volunteering for Pete's sakes, they'll do it, that's great.
Well, they're just, they're in the mix of talking about. They've asked, told them to get with New Salem and look at how they run theirs, and.
Yeah, that's right. We're only talking a thousand dollars. We can, yeah, take a collection if we have to, alright. Um, alright, now, while we're on this, let's get over to, if I can find it, it's hard to find, animal control.
I don't know anything about that.
Oh, I, I was just.
Well, you don't, but you've got some input.
Yeah, you're gonna be.
Got you.
No, I don't, I'm just the spot.
Well, it's kind of several people.
I'm just the spot.
That's still on y'all.
It falls under emergency services, which is a weird, strange place to put it in the world, but that.
Oh, it's just on it.
Okay, it's page thirty four.
Okay.
So, thirty four, alright.
I think my five minutes.
This is a budget that's been in the past twenty four hundred dollars, and now we've proposed eighty two thousand three hundred dollars. And now, what's proposed here right now is just the employee for the county, alright? I, I would love to see, I don't really know, didn't plan on talking about that today, but I'd like to see a post-certified person, which if they're post-certified, that means they're under the umbrella of the sheriff's office. Uh, as far as direction, as far as their payroll, as far as being told to come to work, don't come to work. This, the city is planning on doing the same thing, uh, the city's planning on having an animal control officer too. And why do we need two? Well, you know, occasionally they might need to go home and take a shower and go on vacation once a year. So, that's the thing, half, half, half the time will be city, half the time will be county. Uh, can they do other stuff? Probably. Initially, I'd say they probably do a lot of stuff. Uh, what is that? I don't know. I don't know, but that's for Tommy and the sheriff to help, and for.
Well, I got some plans.
Steve and, for Steve and Dylan to work on the city. Uh, this is for a full-time employee for one year. Now, we don't spend the money until we hire them. Is that July one, September one, March first? I don't know. I mean, we don't have a building yet, and, or IGA in place yet, so there's no mechanism to hire them. But when we do hire them, you've got to give them about a hundred and eighty days for training purposes, especially if it's someone brand new. If it's someone coming from another law enforcement career, they may already be post-certified, they may be certified in animals. Uh, I, I don't know, it just depends on the person you hire.
So you've got two ways that you could do this. You can do non-certified.
Yep.
And you can do a certified. The thing with the certified is, if we can't find, which I don't have anybody that wants to do it, so that means we're gonna have to reach out and find somebody. If you can't find someone that's already certified, you're looking at six, six months' worth of academy now through Georgia. So, if you hire, within the next maybe three months, we could get them in the next academy. Because the other one, we're past the deadline on that, we can't get them in it. If we don't make it before then, then you're looking at the next academy after that, so you're looking at over, you're still looking, because this academy has just started, so basically eighteen months out, if we don't get someone hired.
That's why I.
Within a little bit. So that's something, if you don't do certified, he can still write ordinance tickets. If it become a criminal law through state, then we would have to go in, he would just make the case, the sheriff's office would go in and make the arrest. So, uh, and, and present it for court. So that's, that's the two options y'all have.
So if you're, if we had an uncertified person, are y'all willing to go in and do that when he makes the case?
I mean, we wouldn't have a choice. So if it's against the law, and, and we have the support of him and the DA's office, then, I mean, it kinda ties your hands on us having to go in and, and working the case.
Yeah, I, I just, we need a, we need a certified person that, uh, because I mean, everybody talks about cats and dogs, but we're in a county that we have eh, you know, chickens, we've got cows, we've got horses, you know, so we're, this person's got to be.
Well, I mean, they get the same training. The only difference is certified person's non-certified is, this one can make the arrest, and this one can only write a citation.
Right, but.
So, that, that's basically the only, a citation as far as a county citation, a county ordinance citation.
But that wouldn't help you in any way, I mean.
Well, let's.
Yeah, talk about that.
Yeah, let's talk about budget, um, because we got to get out of, hopefully get out of twenty minutes. Uh, alright, I mean, there's a lot of discussion, and we have a TDAC meeting twice a month, public meeting. Anybody that wants to come, great, we'll take you.
I'm just throwing out both options out there, y'all, so y'all.
Yeah.
But bottom line is.
I'm just looking for money.
Yeah.
But bottom line is, we didn't go from twenty four hundred dollars to eight hundred and twenty thousand, like I think some people want, and it's eighty two thousand, which is still a whole lot of money. But, but again, we only hire this person when we're, we see that window that we need to. Now, just because we put an application out, doesn't mean that's gonna be an easy process either.
Right, no, I agree.
You know, I mean, we gotta, hopefully.
So in plus, add, make sure the equipment's added in on that.
That'll help.
Because you got a ballistic vest, a fire arms, uh.
That's right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Vehicles, which vehicle can be bought through sponsors.
Alright, so anyway, alright, now we know the rest of that story. I don't have any other questions on the sheriff's office, y'all?
We appreciate everything you do, Tommy.
And then Chambers, we'll just have you step right on up, since you're so handy right, right there.
He just like gets ready to say something. He's biting his lip, keeps on talking.
Uh huh. I don't even know what page it's on.
I don't either. I just had it.
What, hey, what's the number on your page at the bottom?
At the bottom, twenty one.
Twenty one, alright. Yeah, there you are. Introduce yourself, sir.
Uh, Joseph Chambers, State County Sheriff's Office, assigned to the jail and a few other divisions.
Alright.
So, um, the beginning of last month, I was feeling real good about the budget. Overtime, I was scheduled to be under about eleven hundred, um, and then we had a guy decided to uh, jump off the top tier of the ru- of the uh jail, and back in the back, and he fell over twenty feet to uh, concrete slab, so now, you know, that, the, the first budget, I'm sorry, the first pay period um, that that happened, that was a ten thousand dollar um, unexpected overtime that we had to pay out.
And you're talking about inmate, just to clarify, right?
Yes, an inmate, absolutely.
Not a jailer?
Not a jailer.
They're not jumping out of the roof, off the roof yet?
Yeah, we've, we've not got that bad. So, um, yeah, um, overtime was, was gonna be under, and that happened, and of course, the last, um, last four, four or five months, we've negotiated uh, over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of uh, inmate medical bills. Of course, the guy that jumped, you know, his are just now rolling in, and we're gonna see how well Obamacare pays out on that. That's the first time that we've had all the inmates uh, that wanted to be signed up on insurance, signed up, so he hit that bracket. And hopefully they'll pay the eighty percent like they say. Um, contracted services, of course, well, group insurance, you know, it's up with everybody else, contracted services, a couple of vendors, the biggest one being Southern Health Partners. Uh, they go up three percent um, every budget year, and uh, there's a s- I think monthly, it's a little over twelve thousand, over thirteen thousand monthly. Um, so yeah, they're, they're three percent on that, I don't know exactly what that will be. Uh, but they went up, water bill went down just a hair bit, and we finally got all the fixtures installed, and everything is um, on the new water fixtures. Was hoping to do away with the natural gas line item altogether last budget year, that was a discussion, just to do away with the natural gas, we had an underground water leak, uh, I'm sorry, underground natural gas leak um, under our building, kinda meant something different, so we tried to uh, pull away from it altogether because the gas lines, as old as the building, it's over thirty years old, and um, wasn't able to get away from it, so we had to pull the gas line out from the asphalt, run it up the s- up the side of the building to catch the boiler, we wasn't able to convert the boiler um, over to propane, and it'd be, you know, feasible. So uh, this budget here is pulling the natural gas back in, where we was hoping to drift on to propane altogether. Um, of course, food's food, same groceries y'all buy at home, and same, it going up, it's going up uh, in the jails all across the state of Georgia. Um, and of course, the inmate, um, inmate medical, that very li- that very bottom line item, that's the one that we, um, you know, when I mentioned we're negotiating over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in medical bills, that's that, where that line item would come from. So that's what I'm fighting to keep, keep it to uh, a forty thousand or sixty thousand dollar a year um, range. I did get smacked around with uh, budget year last, we had two uh, mental health inmates, that both of them hit the hospital um, in Rome, Georgia, and uh, for different reasons. Um, there was Medicaid, they bailed out and wouldn't pay, and both of them were on either Medicaid or Medicare. This bill through to them, they denied it, and it took some time for them to get the medical bills back around, so, you know, that, that was unexpected, but still should be within range below, or, or, or below on the, the budget year coming up. So, I know there's a lot, you have any questions?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
What follows on your contracted services?
So contracted services is anything from, well, like, uh, Southern Health Partners, they provide the nurse and the medical, they provide the nurse, the doctor, and um, the uh, medical services for the jail, they're in there, uh, stuff like your, uh, like the water machines, copy machines, um, just without having a, having that actual uh, detail set here right off the top of my head, that's.
I was, I was, at first I was thinking it was the food, and then it'll come on down.
No, no, food, food has a different breakout down there, yeah.
Okay, so group insurance is up, like everybody else's, um, I understand that, but your regular employees was nine hundred thirty three thousand last year, now it's nine fourteen, and so, but your part time went from eleven hundred to fifty three thousand, what's?
So, um, Marsha Ann Sharp is one that we pulled over, um, her position, we pulled over to the part-time position, um, she actually um, is uh, kinda like a fill-in.
Okay.
Uh, between me, and uh, she also can function in the role of tax, sex offender registry, warrants, and civil process. So, like, if I gotta be out, or Janice Pope has to be out in an administrative function, she can help fill a spot, and uh, we're not fumbling um, in any of them areas. Uh, she also helps out budget and handles, helps me with uh, uh, some of the inmate money as far as like, uh, audits and that sort of thing.
So you moved that full-time down to part-time, and that full-time must have been even more than that, because with a cola, I mean, still reduced your regular employees by eighteen thousand three hundred. Uh, let's see. That's the B. I mean, yours is, you know, yours, the sheriff's office is always the employee. Um, the person that, moving from the sheriff's office into the jail, are they now listed in the jail? Do you know about that, Rebecca? Chad? Okay, so they'll be moving, okay, right, I mean, I'm assuming.
Exactly like Major Bradford say it would be.
Yep, there it is. Yep, okay, so that side will reduce, will increase this one.
So then we can.
By whatever Chad's salary is. Well, I know, we're still getting the thirty, that's something different.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, now as far as I'm concerned, it's something different. Still counting on those two things, but I'm talking about regular employees to regular employees. It's just a, a switch from one department to the other. It just hasn't happened on paper, because it happened.
When it comes out of his department, it goes to this one.
Yeah, 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 it should be dollar for dollar. I noticed, you know, inmate housing, we do have budgeted two hundred thousand, that's been as high as four hundred thousand, but I get it, we house quite a few from Chautauqua County, but if you'll look down under food, it's two hundred thousand, so those two things really kinda offset each other. The more, it's, in Joe's world, the more you feed, the cheaper it is.
Yeah.
So.
I understand it, but.
I guess like the, the army, so.
Yeah, it's how a lot of the, a lot of the contract, food contracts work.
Right, okay, any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Is that the corner I see sitting back there? He sure is skinny.
Now, he looks different from last time.
Yeah, he's not as pretty as the regular corner. Page thirty two.
Hansel Smith, deputy corner, here on behalf of Courtney. Uh, she said, thank you for everything that y'all do for us. I think ours pretty much stayed the same, kinda go gear to gear, which you really don't know. Uh, we average about the same desk every year. Most of ours is equipment, uh, if I have to go down to crime lab, we have a ally transport that helps us out with that, and we can't get down to Atlanta back in the day. But that's the majority of our budget. She was able to work with her last one and get a. work with our last one and get a permit, pack it out to give people, and we go to the houses to help them through the process instead of having to call us and, or our first annual event remembrance day that we're gonna start doing every year, but she said, thank you for everything that y'all do to help us out.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, I mean, your.
Contracted services is up, is that just?
You know, it's related to?
That's related to transporting them down to Atlanta.
Just to transport, alright.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good, uh, this year, but the last three in May, all three of them had to go down.
Yeah.
Uh, it's hit miss on which one. They have their mandatory ones and then we have to call in on some and they'll take them and then sometimes it won't. If she's off or sometimes we're able to maybe squeeze in a couple of times, we're able to take them down, but with the schedule and stuff, it don't work out that way.
And the Crime Lab is where?
Atlanta.
Atlanta. No possibility of moving, I mean, can't take them really anywhere else, can you, Ken?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, Lord, I forgot Alex back there, he's got him. I thought we were almost done, anyway. Alright, uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I was looking at someone, I'll ask you later. No, just, I'm gonna say many centuries since I grew up.
Okay, here, man. Thanks, Ansel. Wish they'd call you Kyle. Kyle, Penny, come on up, honey, we'll get. We'll just save the best for last here.
Penny Keaton, I am the Transit Director for the Transit Sparking.
Page forty-two.
Um, not a lot has changed. We did have a vacant spot for a full-time employee. I don't wanna do that, I wanna do a part-time employee instead. That way I can schedule different, you know, close their schedules and make them later or whatever we need. Um, contracted services went up because we've got a new dumpster down there. The hopper that they use for hearing ears, they had to repair so many times, it was falling apart, so we now have a dumpster and that's what the contracted services are.
Okay, and that's granted, that's covered, so, so you're saying you wanna move some of that money from regular employees just down to part-time?
Right.
Okay, so that's in there, that's that twenty thousand one hundred. Okay, well, that's good, that's saved on there. Fringe benefits, alright. Is that it?
That's it. Of course, your insurance goes up like everyone else.
Uh, up six thousand from prior year. So, so to understand this a little bit better, wait, just take it for a second, um, at the top you see two hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and then at the bottom you see four seventy-three five hundred. So basically, half, a little bit less than half.
It's coming from GDOC.
Yep, GDOC grant, section fifty-three eleven is a grant that we get each year that pays for pretty much, uh, half of whatever the total expenses budget. Now, sometimes they run out of money and we don't want.
DHS is running out of money, so.
Well, yeah, even fifty-three eleven, but so far it's good on that one. At the top you see also a hundred and ten thousand for DHS. That is an unknown, kind of. That is through the Department of Human Services, DHS, which is a state agency. Then they subcontract with, who's called TAG, Transit Alliance Group. Transit Alliance Group then subcontracts with a subcontractor, subcontractor to us.
Three hands on the pot.
And, but we, that number is up to a hundred and ten thousand because years ago, it was barely twenty thousand dollars. Now, the lady that's been doing the ta- what's we call TAG is no longer gonna do that. But there are other options, there are other agencies, we just, they haven't connected the dots yet and we hope that they will connect the dots, cause we really need the hundred and ten thousand.
Of course, passenger fares is under that too, but.
So there's quite a bit, three hundred and sixty-two thousand of this budget offsets the four seventy-three.
Which makes it really only a hundred and ten thousand.
To the local taxpayers. And, and ninety plus percent, I would say, is seniors that utilize this, the, the public transportation. Alright.
So I'm gonna ask one question.
Okay.
Alright, so it costs four seventy-three to run this program, correct?
Correct.
And your fire is bringing fifty-five hundred dollars?
Over sixty-five does not pay.
They're, they're covered in them.
But they're covered under the other, but.
Yep.
And if they're a member, if they're sixty or over, they don't pay. If they're a member, they.
And that's where TAG was coming in paying us for it.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah. And that's why I said, I say ninety, I don't know if it's eighty-five percent or ninety-three percent, it's a lot. Most of them are seniors, there's a few.
Most of them are seniors. We have a few that aren't, but most of them are.
Okay. And the only way we. We literally can get more money through the grant is to increase this budget. It's not that we just do it randomly, it's ju- but if you don't.
Ask for it, you're never gonna get it.
Right, right.
Cause there's some counties get a lot of money, but we've just never budgeted that kinda money, just to ba- budget in high dollars, so. Anyway, any other questions? Thank you, Penny.
Thank you all for what you'll do down there.
Absolutely. Alex Case. Emergency Services. We'll start with thirty-one, I, or whatever you wanna start with, Alex. Thirty-one's ambulance EMS.
Again, Alex Case, Director of Dade County Emergency Services, which is our Dade E nine-one-one, Dade Emergency Management and Dade EMS, along with a team of folks that helped us make this. Our EMS, uh, one of the biggest things again is our, our contracted services, uh, for ambulance service and other services that we have that maintains our equipment, our life pack fifteens and thirty-fives, our stretchers, our Lucuses, those things have to be come up and checked uh, quite a bit, uh, once a year and replacements. In, uh, that was, uh, increased nearly twenty-eight thousand dollars due to contract services going up. And then the, um, our employee, which is Kyle Gross, which is kind of our chief and head of this, runs this, our, um, it, we're lucky with a few of our employees that their insurance is with their spouses, really, all three of the, the assistant directors or chiefs of our, our head, our, our head guys, our wives are pulling their insurance for their other jobs, so that's a plus for us. So, overall, twenty-six thousand, I believe, seven hundred was the increase in EMS.
In the ambulance?
Sir, total, total budget for EMS.
Is that, I don't know, probably four seconds, I'm gonna be under.
And I'm looking at my worksheet, I'm not sure what the final turned out to be. Maybe a little more, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thirty-six thousand seven.
I got thirty-six seven hundred.
Sorry, um, yeah.
But most of that was from the?
Contracted services.
Contract from Memorial.
Yeah.
Well, that and all of our other supplies.
Ah, okay.
All of our other equipment that we have, it's under contract.
So just all of it's under contract?
Well, yes, the stretchers we purchased and everything, but we have the stretchers, the Lucuses, the, the things, the EKGs, they come up every, twice a year and maintain that stuff.
I got you.
They were, if one breaks, they bring us one. Uh, we've got, we call Pro Care on all of our striker equipment, the Luca, the CPR machines, the Lucas devices, uh, all that, yes. The lift systems on the back of the truck and the stretchers themselves.
Okay.
So that's, uh, thirty-eight thousand. So we're sure that's.
Just the price increases that's.
Yes, that's, yes.
Alright, alright. Any other questions on ambulances, EMS, I mean, uh, let's go over to page thirty-four and that's nine-one-one.
Yeah, and there's, uh, thirteen employees of this, including myself under this, uh, for, for the ten, uh, the rest of us there that's doing it, the ten dispatchers on each shift, or five on each shift, uh, two in the day, the split, and we also have a six to two person along with, uh, Thomas Lyons, which is kinda like one of the assistant directors that works that, he's, uh, Monday through Friday as well. Biggest thing for us is our group insurance that we've all been hit with, uh, at that time, and a few individual telephone expenses went up and some of our contract services as well. Our servers, I mean, our software that we have, our, the nine-one-one phone system itself, Z-tron is on a contract service twenty-four seven.
Thirty-four. No, I'm sorry.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
Excuse me.
Yeah, thirty-three, yeah.
That's, that's based off the draft sheet, I think it says ninety-three.
Yeah, you're right. So insurance is up, uh, I mean, that's the biggest hit to it, really.
Yeah.
Contracted services again, a thousand.
O- overtime is up for us, we don't really don't, we, we can't run with one person. Sometimes, uh, two, two is a rental. And sometimes today's day, we cannot do that. I didn't leave here till almost two hours after work, cause we could not get the trees and stuff Wednesday.
Yep.
The storms and stuff, it just kept coming, whatever come through, uh, we also had some pretty bad calls and we really need three around the clock, but we're, we are, we are two down right now. Trying to, so we, we also have to have emergency calling, we had one got sick the other night at three AM in the morning. Uh, with a bad migraine, she tried to work through it, she just couldn't, her partner couldn't, uh, wouldn't let her, we called the ambulance and her, uh, fiancee come and got her. We had to call somebody in at three AM, so, and a lot of times that's us, we do, like, I've gotta work the rest of the day today. Vacations, uh, and two down, uh, just happens, like this week, one of our employees has gone five days or he's out, cause he only worked two days this week, but we gotta cover those shifts.
So Daniel Jones is the IT guy, but
He's also.
He's basically an I- backup, Alex is a backup, Thomas Lyons is a backup.
We all three are backups on top with our contractors for IT, so, you know, we have to spin our hats a little bit. Sometimes that is a problem when emergencies are hitting, and nine-one-one's the priority, that's where it starts, that's when somebody's calling us and that is the most priority, which it involves a lot of IT and, you know, scheduling with other things that we try to do. We've been working, Thomas and Daniel's been working really hard to beat some of this October deadline with, uh, our Windows eleven, they just finished up the, I believe, the magistrate's office, uh, some of their software that they report back to the state took a little bit of time. The next big project is Angie's office and she, we're making sure that we're done with that before she gets into her big busy taxis. And it's tested out, well, she was getting a little worried with that, but that's, those computers come in yesterday, or, excuse me, Wednesday.
Okay, any questions on nine-one-one? Alright. Thirty, page thirty-five, well, Emergency Management.
You don't ha- on there, there's not a, uh, part-time with that, I mean.
For what?
I don't know, like, this would help out.
Nine-one-one.
Yeah.
They can't, we've tried it, they can't stay certified, they gotta come in and take, uh, we gotta have so many hours a month now.
Yeah, it's not worth the pay or anything.
We used to and we tried.
Yeah.
We couldn't.
Yep.
They don't, they let their GCIC go out, that's a yearly thing you have to do, it's a secur- security integrity.
Yeah.
All, all my co-partners through, uh, Catusa, Walker, Chautauqua and Whitfield that we deal with a lot, uh, a lot of them are also EMA directors too, so we get both hands to help and we, we fight the same problems with them.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
One of us for ours is, again, the turnaround and Joseph has mentioned this before, we're stepping stone, I ju- just lost a great employee, but she wants to further her service to Dade County as a jailer and ultimately a road patrol. So, I don't criticize them, I, I want them to step and several people have stepped through us and that's fine, but they have put in a good service and really changed service, but, you know, if they wanna continue to serve Dade County, that's, we're gonna let them move up to do that, so. We did interview, uh, Wednesday and we got, uh, an applicant that we feel is gonna be good for one of us, one of the positions. Uh, Emergency Management, as you know, this is a big deal with us when we, uh, have disasters that strike and, uh, we've been very, uh, blessed with grants that we get through from mitigation, we're actually, uh, from, uh, as our history we've had here, we've been blessed with, uh, storm shelters, the outdoor warnings sirens, uh, we're in a application period right now from Hurricane Helene that we are part of, all hundred and fifty-nine counties were declared. Uh, we put in for some other, another shelter and a siren that we're working on and more generators to either help with that, uh, and some more that the water department may need. Cause we, after they seen what we had, there was a few more poles left and besides life, water's very important, uh, besides life, fire protection is part of that as well. And so we, we need a few more possibly for that, but that's some of the things that, uh, we don't know where that, how long that funding would be for the grant, but could be years, as you know, it took nearly five years to approve, the last one went from fourteen to nineteen where they finally approved it. Anyway, the budget, um, it's actually down six hundred bucks, so, uh, we do have part-time folks in that, which is, uh, part of the Emergency Management is considered with the City of Trenton, so Ansel Smith and Jerry Kizer are our part-time EMA directors that help us with that, are a big part, uh, they're sitting in here with us in the middle of the night, in the middle of the morning when the storms come in, also Daniel and Thomas and Kyle help come fill those roads. Uh, we make it all multi-disciplined because it's just, we're not just one department, we're all emergency service.
Any questions about EMA?
Here it's showing, it looks like you went down thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I've got the whole list, I'm sorry.
What?
I, I've got our original list that Rebecca sent us whenever we went budgeting, I didn't get the final.
Just general supplies?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the most part.
Whenever they send us out before we meet, I make my notes on that and I didn't get my.
I'm just curious what, what caused, what would've been the cause to go down?
The seventy-five at the top is that, uh, E, EMPG grant, and so it basically covers some of the expenses.
But we have to match it fifty percent.
We do have to match it fifty percent, so that's what makes that part of fifty-six thousand.
That's the thing, so. We, we've been buying radios with that a little bit of time, so we'll pay half of it out of the general fund, the other half out of spots. We just have to.
We want the thirty-second edition of this though, about radios, what's happening with radios. And I'll try not to look towards Philip, so his head doesn't spin around.
Please don't be mad and I'm not the messenger here, uh, I'm gonna reiterate, I'm gonna reiterate, Dade, Walker, Catusa and Whitfield, that we're in all of this in the same boat, because I don't know if I can do it thirty-second, Commissioner.
Well.
Try. We are, things are changing, and I know technology changes. Uh, we started in oh-eight with a technology of a brand of radio that died out, we're in a new tech, we're in a current technology over ten or twelve years. Uh, take that mic off, please.
Yep.
I, we, uh, yeah.
Yeah, we had a little incident.
Yeah.
Again, it's not just us, we, we've also got consoles in the nine-one-one center, that's gonna be obsolete in twenty-thirty. They're not gonna make a more support probably after thirty-two. Uh, we have things in the field that's not working as well that will not be, that will be obsolete, that we're looking at a five and ten-year plan with all four counties working as a group in Northwest Georgia that's on a Motorola system and also the radios themselves. Whitfield's in the process of replacing all their portables and mobiles throughout their whole public safety, the City of Dalton Fire, please.
So you're talking about hand-held radios now, that's what?
Both, yes. It's happening.
So, we'll talk more about it.
There's more about it, but I, I mean, I'm just, when, when we, we know part of our meetings is with our regional valley system, all four of those counties are members of that, plus, uh, ten other counties in Tennessee, Hamilton, City of Chattanooga, all the way up. We call it the Tennessee Valley Regional Radio System. Now, Ten- State of Tennessee has its own TACAN system. And TACAN in Tennessee, Tennessee Valley is the same thing, kinda, but we, we built this in oh-eight prior to the Tennessee coming on full-fledged, and they fund a lot of their stuff, but even though we're in Northwest Georgia, we're in another division of Motorola, but we're with Tennessee and we can't play that, we got some things and we just had to save Motorola, I don't care what you say. We're with this group because it's different engineers, it costs us more money. Tennessee Valley and TACAN are redesigning the system because we gotta start replacing equipment, it's been in there since oh-eight. But again, the Apex radios that we've been approving, a little bit each time, we've been buying from, uh, place, a place that either they're turned in from either trade-up to the next series and we get a two-year warranty versus a three-year warranty and pay, uh, about maybe sixty percent of what it would cost for Motorola. But we're getting to the point now where you can't even get parts, it's getting to the point where we can't get parts for them.
So be aware, we're gonna be changing it. I mean, as they replace stuff, they're gonna need to go with the next generation of stuff, but that's what we always do with everything. And they're gonna try to get the most used.
But it's gonna fizzle out when in twenty-thirty?
Twenty-thirty is where some of the, uh. Twenty-thirty is where some of the, uh, end of life, that means it won't be like, the consoles is a big thing.
Right.
Uh, right now, DeKalb County, Alabama is buying, uh, some of the Apex Next, they call it, and also Apex. Apex is still being done, like what we brought up, but w- we're seeing and they are saying possibly end of life coming twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-two.
Yeah.
Which means they will not, you won't be able to send anything back to Motorola to get repaired.
Right.
And there is third-party companies that can work on them, but they may or may not do that. And when it costs more, what the radio is to get it repaired, we're getting rid of them. We're still running on some of the old two thousand eight radios in the fire department. Uh, we bought sixty in the beginning and then everything that we've been upgrading the sheriff's office with, we've been pushing back in the fire department. A lot of the XTS and some of the XTL mobiles. Some of our fire trucks still don't have the mobiles on them. They still have the old VHF stuff.
Okay.
That was a little more than thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll talk more about it at future meetings.
What we're doing, again, working with our four counties, is to go, come back to all the commissions as a team of four to look at, cause we're fixing to propose for splosh coming ahead. We gotta look at this. A five-year plan and a ten-year plan that we get to this. It may be a little bit this five, and next splosh another, gotta, gotta.
All right.
You know, I'm a, I'm way ahead thinking, worrying, cause, I mean, we gotta get here and help people.
We're gonna move ahead. Uh, IT is quick, it's page five for y'all. And, um, IT, see if I can summarize it. Would we have a, do we need a full-time IT guy? We sure do. Do we need two? Probably. Does the board wanna pay for another sixty-seven thou- uh, basically eighty thousand dollars when you start adding everything up?
Again, his.
I don't think we do, but I'm just saying, that sometimes our employees call and Daniel does the best he can. Sometimes Thomas does the best he can. Now, if we're willing to buy another person, pay another person, hey, I'm sure they won't say no. But, uh.
We just can't get a call immediately of somebody's here to put some equipment in that we don't know. That's the problem. Scheduling is a big deal, but emergency stuff to that, yes, we break away and get to it. If it's, if it's a non-critical thing, may just be just a minute or.
And no- normally, it's not commissioners that fuss, but now at the last meeting, we, none of anybody could get on the wifi. And therefore, I know, I don't, we don't have to talk about it, but anyway, I'm just saying, normally, we don't even have a problem, but there was a reason behind that. A good justifiable reason.
Right.
Uh, it's just, you know, you know, how, how do you regulate it? It's hard, so.
What's under the contract services for this?
Yeah.
All of our, um, we pay a service every month for internet, or, I mean, our email scrubbing, security. Every year, we have to buy licensing, uh, for our, uh, services that run our servers.
That's what's, that's that licensing we've talked about.
Well, it's paid every year. Our, our Veeam backup, our backups are critical. We got continuity of operations that we have to live in case this building moves. We are not as secure as I'd like to be for our IT in this building, and there's a lot of stuff in the building behind the nine-one-one, behind my office in there that is very vulnerable. Because it's on a second floor behind the aluminum storefront glass, just like this with a piece of plywood on it. We have been talking in the past, is moving stuff to the shelter, and we are. Our backups and stuff's moving there. Every little time we make this better, it plus seven to eight percent increase in their services. And that is also our engineers, uh, that is, uh, our IT engineering that helps us maintain this and keeps it up. Uh, they monitor a lot of stuff for us twenty-four seven. The wifi password, we had too many TVs, phones, and watches on it. It shut us down one day. Because everybody's on it, and our group, real code TVs and stuff.
We're working on bigger pipe, but.
Well, we did, but that's.
It happens.
None, inside the Dade County GA here is a very secure domain that we have to be, cause we're constantly hit with stuff. We get emails, people get emails. We've been educating each department as we're going. If you don't recognize it and see it, uh, we found some games on stuff. I mean, uh, that's the stuff I feel that we, plus, we're trying to keep us as secure as we can, even y'all's laptops. And when we had to change, we had to keep, we had to knock stuff down pretty quick to get us back on, cause we had people that couldn't sit on desktop and work that day. We just failed to get the right password back or anything.
All right, I need to run through this really, really quick. So, we appreciate it, Alex. I do definitely appreciate. He's got a lot of hats, as he's always had a lot of hats, but, uh, we, uh, had some folks not here today, and I know we've, y'all have some other commitments we gotta get to, and I'm gonna try to get you out of here in five minutes, I promise. But, uh, if you look at the very first page, which is page three, I don't know if you wanna look at it or not, but anyway, appeal administrator. That's covered under the, uh, Superior Court Clerk's office now. That's a, uh, bu- this is a budget set aside for the Board of Equalization, basically no change. Uh, Board of Relations, we heard from, the Commission, uh, you know, look, if y'all have got time, sometime I wanna sit down, I'll be glad to go through this. The big thing there is a part, it says part-time employees. But realize, five of the, or four of those is the salaries, that five thousand dollar increase that the state, the county did not give themselves a raise, but the state did last year, and this is part of that, we have to realize it on the other six months of the year, and so part of that is that. Uh, and, uh, that also does include Kathy Reagan, which is our grant writer. That is up to ninety-four thousand four hundred. She's not getting paid that. That includes all the county commissioner's salaries. So, don't get excited when you see that, but, uh, she's already brought in one grant that's four hundred and six thousand, plus two other grants at eight hundred thousand, so she's been paid for her salary, uh, of twenty thousand. Uh, the other amounts, group insurance went up. Go and looking down the list. Uh, contracted services is up, like everybody else's budget today we talked about. Strange to me that water and utility la- electricity's up. I wanna kind of dig into that. I don't know really why that's up. Uh, tax commissioner is Angie Galloway. No major changes. Hers is up. The major thing again is her group insurance. Uh, so, nothing major to report there. We talked about property already. Building and grounds, uh, building repairs is up ten thousand. Some of that was, uh, due to HVAC. I'll just tell you, if we hire an HVAC, if we had an HVAC certified person, I think we could cut a lot of money out of the budget, uh, on contracted services. But we don't, and so right now, we still use our local contractors. Insurance is listed there midway down at a three hundred and twenty thousand. That's up fourteen thousand dollars, uh, from the previous year. Contracted services again, up twenty-four thousand to seventy-four thousand. Uh, and general supplies is up, uh, almost nine thousand dollars in that, in that department. Uh, judicial administration, no major change. It's pretty flat. Superior Court Clerk, uh, page ten. She had requested a new employee, uh, they, something changed with state law regarding juvenile court and she felt like she needed more employees, but at the present time, that, that we have not approved that request. The part-time, and she did request that that part-time amount of nineteen thousand five hundred be, remain in there. Uh, it's been in there for several, several years, but never been utilized. It is zero right now. If y'all instruct me to put that back, I will, but that's twenty thousand dollars, uh, right there, and, but, I, you know, maybe call Kathy Page and talk to her about that. Contract, her contracted services truly is up fifty-one hundred dollars just because it costs more. District Attorney's Office is up thirty-seven thousand. That is two new employees. Uh, they finally hired, so their total budget, supplemental budget at the bottom there is two hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. That's, uh, again, that's an increase. Our portion of that's thirty-seven thousand. Uh, you can only imagine what Walker, Catusa, and Chautuga's portion is, much higher. That's at a ten percent. So, that's not a hundred percent sold yet. He has to sell that to all the other county commissioners in Northwest Georgia too. Chief, we talked about Chief Magistrate already, Ju- Probate Judge, uh, no major change. Um, I did question why regular employees is up, twenty-five thousand. Do you know, Rebecca? Off the top of your head, that's a, I was hoping she'd be here to answer that, but there's no new employees. I don't know what's going on there. So, we'll find out about that. That seems a little steep. Uh, cause elected officials, constitutional officers this year did not get a raise, so I don't, really don't know what that is.
She had that, um, it was like that, uh, this past year, it was after the last budget, she had that, um, it was either an intern or a, no, it, it was a, it was a worker that was.
I don't know.
I think there was a.
Her number of employees between the two budget years did not change.
Guess what I thought? I don't know. So, we'll check into it. Her insurance is up, like everybody else's. Juvenile court uh, actually went down thirty-seven hundred dollars, no problem there. Public defender spoke, law enforcement spoke. Uh, let's see here. Juvenile, page twenty-two, Department of Juvenile Justice, no change. Uh, we are looking at, uh, and not just no change, right. Fire departments, there's no major changes. Typically, what you see there changing is their fuel intake. If they took in more fuel last year and paid for it, then we, we up or down those values. Uh, but overall, there is absolutely no change to those supplements and or anything. Uh, and there's just this corner, public safety, animal control. Public health, uh, public health is page thirty-nine. Uh, we are in negotiations with them about their supplement. They have met, uh, their, uh, fund balance for, uh, attain their fund balance level that they hope to, uh, after using quite a bit during COVID years, so we're hoping to see a reduction in that, which would result in a reduction in the overall budget. Uh, welfare, it's defax, no major change there. Uh, electricity's up seventeen hundred dollars. Uh, senior center went down thirty-seven hundred, and I don't like that. I think anything we should've raised at thirty-seven hundred. Um, I'm, I've been down there several times. We've been doing a lot of things to the building, but, uh, I still, you know.
What would've caused that one to go down?
Uh, well, it looks like it was the big thing, was, uh, contracted services went down, and I really don't, I don't know what that was, but we just didn't spend the money.
Yeah.
We spent three hundred forty-three dollars estimated out of six thousand, so. I, well, I'll tell you, part of it was Paula Stallings left. Uh, she was doing a lot of extra things with the seniors, and so that's that.
Yep.
Uh, public tran- public transportation, parks and rec. You see at the top, moved some money from one regular employee down to part-time, you know, benefit of part-time is they don't pay, we don't pay insurance on them, so right now, that's the, that's the biggest thing. Uh, allows us to hire a couple different people, like, their part-time rate. So, uh, a- again, if questions about it, give me a call, we'll talk through it, but it's actually pretty flat, uh, overall. It's actually down five hundred dollars for the year. Library, again, we'll talk more about that, take, continue to watch that one. Soil conservation is Stephen Bonico. Everything's pretty stable. Just wanna bring you up to date on something we got word, uh, part of the grant cuts we're seeing out of Washington DC, uh, may affect us not this year, but next year. So, this, we're talking about FY twenty-seven, they're talking about doing away with that grant. We've been getting that grant for ages. I mean, that's the soil conservation grant, and so call your congressmen, your senators, and I'm talking about US congressmen, US senators, and voice your concern, cause that's part of the farm grants and the USDA grants.
Right.
Uh, but not a problem this coming year. We were in a two-year contracts.
Yeah, next year in July.
Yeah. Uh, extension agency, uh, we talked about it already, uh, code enforcement and economic housing, so that's it. Now, looking at the very first page, which is that, all the revenues on the left and all the expenditures on the right. All the revenues add up to fifteen million seven hundred nineteen thousand dollars. The revenues, uh, I'm sorry, expenditures currently proposed at sixteen thousand sixty-nine dollars. That is a difference of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we are continuing to find the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to have a balanced budget. We will have a balanced budget by next week. Um, but we, just so you know, we need to do this exercise today. If we, if we can find three hundred and fifty thousand in revenue, that would mean that the increase for this year's budget would be at two point five nine percent. Not bad. Anytime you stay under three percent, I think that's fabulous. Uh, but two point five nine percent increase from year to year, fifteen thousand, fifteen million three hundred twenty-two thousand, current year's budget, to fifteen million seven nineteen thousand for the proposed budget. But, uh, and that's if we can find this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we will find it one way or the other. We just heard, we found some of it right here, going through this.
Yeah.
Uh, as you know, expenses, uh, the big thing we heard about today was the COLA, the COLA, I'm sorry, whoop, back up. The insurance, the insurance, medical insurance for us went up seven point six five, seven point six three percent, something. We'll round that to eight percent, uh, so that is up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over last year. That's a big, that's, that's most of it. The other part of this is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for COLA. That would be looking at a four percent increase. The state did not award an increase to, it's strange, they gave it to different agencies individually, but typically they go across the board and say two percent, seven percent, whatever they say.
Yeah.
They didn't do that this year. Uh, I think it's because they did the flat amounts over the last few years, uh, five thousand and then was it twenty-five or three thousand a year before or something? Anyway, so, I don't know if they're just letting counties get caught up on that or what. Currently, in this budget, we do have proposed a four percent COLA, all right, four percent COLA. But I would recommend four, two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, if we cannot find this three hundred and fifty anywhere else, I would suggest we take at least two percent. I mean, I, at least you still get two percent COLA. That's not for any of us sitting up here, that's for the staff and the employees. And so, um, i- if we can find it in other, we'll know as we get into these values today and, and continue to talk with them. Uh, but again, if we add back a thousand here, two thousand there, and take away four thousand, I mean, it, it sounds to me like it's a lot of wash. It's, you know, so I, I have a feeling it's not gonna be four percent, but we are still shooting for at least a two percent COLA.
For, for employees.
For employees. Uh, health, insurance again did go up two hundred and fifty thousand, which is eight percent increase. Uh, contracted services, uh, as you well could see today, all of, um, most of them went up. IT, building maintenance, emergency services, nine-one-one, sheriffs were the biggies, but really, everybody's went up. Um, supplements did go up. Most of those were contained to the district attorney. Um, and the, uh, public defender, I think. So, anyway, so, be, that's, that's the summary. Um, insurance, property on insurance went up, it almost always goes up, fourteen thousand dollars. And, um, we did add a final budget to this, just so you know, uh, at the very, very back, it's called tourism, but it, all that's doing is tracking the expenses associated with the old county courthouse, the historic courthouse. I've had a lot of people wanna know what it costs to run it. This is the best way to do it, just create a department and watch the money come in and go out. So, we'll see, uh, what, basically, the power bill, electric bill, uh, water bill, um, I think they do have gas, it's natural gas. And then there's a revenue section at the top that shows the rent income that's proposed to come in. Maybe it'll come in higher, who knows? That's the summary. Sorry it took two and a half hours, but there you go.
You're talking about the, like, rent, the people that rent it out. You're not talking about rent?
Yeah, renting upstairs, the rent downstairs for the different agencies using it.
Oh.
Lights for Dade.
So, the lights.
IDA, huh?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, it's just a way to track it and keep up with it. Uh, any questions?
Is all the insurance, health insurance for the whole county, is it all come from one place?
It's in each, it's isolated to each department for their re- representing their employees, but it comes from, no, it, dental, um, dental and vision, or dental, uh, dental and medical come from, do they come from the same? I think they come from the same. They're on our card, and maybe vision too, I don't know.
I think they're all three.
I, I did.
Dental and vision.
Yeah, and so, we, we did negotiate with them. We have a broker that went to the open market. And to, to change was in the close to thirty percent change, and Aetna was the alternate. And it was, it's just too, too expensive to even consider. So, we are with, we're with.
Cigna.
Cigna, yeah, Cigna, and we have been for a few years. Prior to that, we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia through ACCG, but they tried to go up twenty-six percent one year, and that was their bottom number, and so.
And then Cigna's initial percentage. And then Cigna's initial percentage was wiped on fif- fifteen?
Yeah, it was. It was, it was fifteen, so we got it down to seven.
Yeah.
Our, excuse me, our claims history actually was better this year than it had been in five years, uh, as far as payouts, but we're part of a pool, and that overall pool did, you know, exceed a hundred and one percent, so. Alright, any other questions? Hearing that, we adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.